Okay, now we're recording for Monday, September twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Let's all join and do the pledge of allegiance. Carol, can we have a roll call, please?
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumke.
Here.
Lisa Hessel. Sonal Kokarni.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Okay, we note that Lisa Hessel is out, and I'm covering four tonight, so welcome, everybody. Just review the agenda real quick. We have a few communications items, the superintendent report, our student report, that's after the public comment. We start with a public comment, and then a consent vote agenda, items from the Personnel and Program and Personnel Committee, and then items from the Facilities and Finance Committee, a little Illinois Association of School Boards, anything from SEDOL tonight? Okay, some notes from SEDOL, and then future agenda items, opportunity, followed by adjournment, so we will get started. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on public comment? Buzzing sound.
Look down just a little bit.
There you go.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jayden Schwartz. I use she/her/hers pronouns, and I'm a senior at Vernon Hills High School. I'm also a writer in journalism for The Scratching Post. I'm writing an article about increased LGBTQIA+ representation and pronoun transparency within Vernon Hills High School. There's been a rise in awareness for sexual and gender identity ever since the COVID- nineteen pandemic hit, and with the increase in this awareness, conversations about pronouns have also become more normal to discuss with teacher and student relationships. LGBTQIA+ high schoolers at Vernon Hills feel provoked to talk about why queer representation and pronouns are so important. First, I want to define a few words for you. Non-binary means genders that don't fall into one of the male or female categories. Transgender means people whose gender identity is different from the gender they were assigned at birth, meaning that people do not need to transition to become male or female, but instead they identify as a different gender than they were assigned. And cisgender is someone that identifies as the gender that they were assigned at birth. Alex Karsten, a senior at Vernon Hills High School, uses he, they, she pronouns and identifies as gender fluid. Gender fluid is relating to a person who does not identify themselves as having a fixed gender. Alex claims that there has been an increase of LGBTQIA+ pride within Vernon Hills, but we also have a lot of areas for improvement. He recommended things like reading more texts with queer characters, including more queer-centered focus in history. Also, in health class, we can focus on education with sexualities and LGBTQIA+ sexual education instead of just focusing on cis, het, sex. Even though the LGBTQIA+ inclusive curriculum bill was passed to include LGBTQIA+ studies in classes, I have not had any teachers discuss these topics, and I admit that my experience could differ from the experience of others. When teachers don't ask their students for their pronouns, it causes a lot of discomfort for transgender and non-binary students. But they are still grateful for the teachers that do ask for their pronouns. Some ways to combat this discomfort would be by asking teachers to create forms in which students can submit their pronouns in private. The teachers could also ask the students if they feel comfortable being referred to by these pronouns in front of the class, in private, or both. This avoids telling the whole class if the student is not comfortable to do so. Another area for improvement would be the locker rooms and bathrooms. Although a lot of progress has been made with the gender-neutral bathrooms and locker rooms, they are not very accessible for transgender or non-binary students. For instance, the gender-neutral changing rooms are far away from both the female and male locker rooms and the dance locker rooms. Every day for class, male-presenting students, transgender students, and non-binary students use the gender-neutral locker room or the male locker room, which is located farther away from the dance gym than the female-presenting students have to walk to. Again, there has been a lot of progress made with providing gender-neutral changing rooms, but I believe that we can still do more. Some recommendations to support the LGBTQIA+ representation are educating teachers on what transgender and what non-binary means and simply helping them learn about gender and sexual identities. Educating teachers about these identities should not be the role of students coming out to their teachers, but instead the role of the district to teach the faculty. Along with this, social studies, language arts, language and fine arts teachers should include LGBTQIA+ history and moments of injustice in the curriculum. Just like how D one twenty-eight schools continuously talk about race and ethnicity, LGBTQIA+ studies should be taught as well. I believe that as a district, we provide, sorry, excuse me, I believe that as a district that strives to be daring, we can make D one twenty-eight an inclusive place for students that were part of the LGBTQIA+ community. Please let me know if you have any questions, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else which should address the board? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the president's report. We have the student school board representatives, so take it away.
All right. Can everyone hear me?
Mm-hmm.
All right, perfect. Vernon Hills will be starting off today, so we're first going to start off with athletics. So congratulations to the boys' golf team for winning conference. Dylan Josephson easily placed first place with a score of seventy-three and beat his second-place opponent by five strokes. A couple of strokes behind him, though, A.J. Kaproski placed seventh, Adam Brand placed eighth, and Kartan Vasudeva placed tenth. This team will be playing regionals on Wednesday at White Deer, which is the course, their home course. Also, congrats to the girls' golf team, who also placed first in conference. Lexi Shulman placed second with a score of seventy-nine. Right behind her, Anna Lee placed fifth, Tiffany Kang placed eighth, and Emily Jones and Irene Im tied for tenth. Great job, ladies. In addition, our seniors have made an effort to advertise our senior nights. So on social media and also just my word-to-word, a bunch of seniors are talking to each other to try to get people out to their events, such as boys' golf, that's not a sport people usually don't come out for. And this year for senior night, I think we had maybe six or seven, which is still a low number, but it was great to see a couple of people show up for that. I was one of them, and I had a great time. And the ones that do have participa-, or large, sorry, large crowds, for senior nights, they're getting bigger ones. For example,
Student rap. Student rap.
Sorry. For example, the girls' volleyball team will be having their senior night on Thursday, and they have been advertising it for about a week now, and they're expecting a pretty large crowd. At our football games, we've had an excellent number of students attend our home games. With our senior section at full capacity plus the other classes filling up the rest of the student section, in addition, our turnout to away games has also been outstanding. Even though it was mostly juniors and seniors, our last week's game against Deerfield filled up the whole student section for the away, like smaller section. We had our first dance of the year, the kickoff dance, and it was a huge success. Over eight hundred students attended this, and even with a bit, with a rough weather in the beginning, with lightning, we are still able to make it out into the field and have a great time. Eight hundred is over fifty percent of our student body, which is excellent. This is a great way to show both the freshmen and sophomores how dances go at VH. At the dance, we had five senior groups perform their lip syncs, and the overall support was amazing. Each group was not there to win, but there to have fun. Every group cheered for each other, and when all groups were all done, they all came together and congratulated each other. Nick Heiser, one of the members of Cougar Watch, said that the kickoff dance was the best day of his high school career by a long shot. The winners of the lip sync were the Cougar Watch, and they'll be performing at the Homecoming Assembly on October eighth. As another month has passed, students have gotten more used to masks in school. For most, wearing a mask for six-plus hours straight has become second nature to them, but others have needed a constant reminder to wear their mask properly. Hopefully, as the months keep passing by, students will continue to wear their mask correctly. This month, seniors have been training for the Rite Assembly. The Rite Assembly is on one of our half-days, October thirteenth, where freshmen come in and get into small groups, do some icebreakers, and listen to some motivational speakers. As seniors, we welcome the freshmen and try to create a safe space for them to talk about anything they would like. Our final training is tomorrow to finalize who is in what group, what teachers are in what group, and what the groups are going to be doing for their activities. Now to Tiffany.
Thank you, Kevin. So tonight, we have our first orchestra concert, which you probably noticed when you were walking in, and this is our first live concert of the year and our first one since the pandemic began. The students have been working hard since their first day of school, and they are beyond excited to show off all their hard work. This brings excitement to the whole school because many students are excited to go and watch them because this is the first fine arts performance in a long time. The parents of David Dang, a senior who plays violin, says, "We can't wait to see the performance after all those days practicing after school." Our JSA club has kicked off the school year with some amazing debates. Being able to discuss with one another in person and not over Zoom has brought a lot of excitement and new faces to JSA. Some of the debate topics so far have been troops in Afghanistan, heartbeat bills, the Second Amendment, COVID vaccines, and abortion rights. These have allowed students to hear different perspectives and learn more about the opposite point of view. We had open house on Thursday, September second, and Vernon Hills' parents walked their students' schedules and got to meet all of their teachers. Despite masks and COVID concerns, teachers said that their classrooms were full of eager parents. Students in NHS volunteered at this event to point parents in the right direction in the hallways and help them find classrooms. Dr. Gilliam and the administration team met with freshman parents to address the top ten questions that all new parents have, which helped reassure them with any concerns that they may have had. Two weeks ago, we had our Yellow Ribbon Week to raise awareness for mental health and suicide prevention. The Spark Exec Board wrote messages of encouragement with chalk in front of the school to brighten people's day as they walked in. Throughout the week, we had different activities for each day. For example, we had staff welcoming students with socially-distanced high fives and smiles before school started. We all wore yellow one day. We signed posters as a pledge. We had informational booths in the foyer, and we had so much more. With the transition going back to normal school, many teachers have continued their generosity from last year and are allowing students to retake many, if not all, of their quizzes and tests. While this has been a great opportunity for us students to show that we know the material and also to help boost our grades, it has been a struggle to get this done. The testing center in the arc has been overcrowded basically every day before and after school. Even though it's open during all periods during the day, many students need and want to take it before or after school because they have limited time for lunch and they want to use this time to eat. And so this has resulted in delays for test retakes because the room only allows for about twenty students since it's pretty small and it's first-come, first-served. So after it gets filled, unfortunately, they have to start kicking people out and telling them to come another day. But all of our teachers have been very flexible and understanding with this, allowed for extensions, but it has been frustrating for both students and teachers. An update on our new STEM capstone class, many of us have now figured out what experiment that we want to research and conduct, such as if food dye has an effect on organisms, if aloe vera can help people with cancer, and how stress hormones can affect cancer cells. As you can see, there's a big variety of what we can research, which is amazing because we get a lot of freedom ticks for whatever we are interested in, especially with the help of mentors. For example, I wanted my project to be something with neuroscience because I know this is something I'm interested in. I was struggled with where I wanted to go with this. So last week, I was able to have a call with a mentor who specializes in neuroscience, who helped me brainstorm some ideas and lead me to where I want my project to go. Also, many of us need materials that are not standard in an ordinary science class, like mice or cancer cells. So Mr. Procyz has been helping us to see what materials are in the budget, what will be allowed in the lab. And now onto Sophia.
The VHS VH two O club has started a new zero-waste initiative in the cafeteria to teach students about sustainability and environmental health. The idea originally started back in two thousand and nineteen, but because of COVID, they had to put it aside until now. The cafeteria is using several trash bin stations with National Honor Society members volunteering their lunch periods to help sort trash into the appropriate bins. The trash gets sent to a company who later turns it into compost, and as of now, more than twenty pounds of compost have been produced just from the VHS cafeteria. Mr. Greenowall and Mr. Wolf are the staff leaders for this initiative, and after talking to Mr. Greenowall, I learned that the club plans to roll out a more educational perspective of the initiative to show students what the impact of environmental sustainability is. Students are cooperating with the initiative at the moment, and more support is being added to it as it starts to expand from the cafeteria. The staff and administration at VHS has been focusing on encouraging inclusion and diversity as the year moves forward. Two weeks ago, various affinity groups like Jewish Student Union, Latin American Student Organization, Sexuality and Gender Acceptance Organization, Asian Student Union, Black Student Union, and many more met during class periods, during class-day periods, as Fun Friday activities. Each club invited students who either identify with these affinity groups or wanted to be allies to come in and get to know each other. The experience created a safe and welcoming environment for new students as well as a space for them to share similar experiences and build trust. The turnout for all of these groups was great, and more students were reported to have joined these clubs after the Fun Friday activity. To add to this increase in inclusion at VHS, LGBTQ+ students have reported feeling a sense of inclusion from teachers in their classes. At the beginning of the year, more teachers asked students for pronouns in their get-to-know-you activities. Additionally, some teachers have put up pride flags in their classrooms, as well as LGBTQ+ safe-space labels all over the school. This shift in sensitivity has benefited to our school's LGBTQ+ community, but many will agree that there's still some progress to be made. As many of you have heard, VHS has a new dance gym. The facility is incredible, and many of us, including Ms. Jaffe, are very thankful for having a space to practice. However, senior student Jaden Schwartz couldn't help but point out to me that the changing rooms for these dance classes are only accessible to female-identifying students. Any students not fitting that description need to run across the school to the normal locker rooms to change for class and then risk being late to their next class by having to follow this routine every day. Although dance is a mostly female-dominated class, non-female students shouldn't have to worry about having a place to comfortably change for classes. Additionally, non-binary and transgender students from all gym classes have to go through the process of changing in other rooms, even further down by the basement. After noticing this, we reached out to several non-binary students about the situation, and they expressed their experience as being more of an uncomfortable and time-consuming hassle than using the male/female changing rooms, and that in the near future, the space in these rooms might run out. While we are appreciative that the board, as well as the school administration, have made progress on these issues before, students like Jaden and myself hope that the board can take this into consideration and come up with a way to improve further upon these issues. The Ronald McDonald Care Mobile also visited our school this past month. It is a portable nurse program that allows some of our students to get their physicals done, who may have otherwise not had the opportunity to do so. It's an important equity initiative as it meets the needs of those who don't have access to resources that many others do. And lastly, congratulations to Anurudh Adiraju, Ella Bohm, Laura Dohler, Joel Kim, Jackie Liu, Devin Mulcrone, and Andrew Tikunov on becoming VHS's two thousand and twenty-one national merit semifinalists. These students scored at the top point five percent of their class nationally on the PSAT and have achieved a very high honor status from doing so. Way to go, guys. And now on to Libertyville.
All right, so the energy and excitement from the start of the school year has carried out through the first month at Libertyville High School. First, I just want to talk a little bit about how students are feeling, like being back at school. Just a general consensus from the students that they're really glad to be back and excited to be back at school and enjoying going to classes every day. School spirit and school culture is at an all-time high at Libertyville High School. Like to just shout out the administration or faculty and upperclassmen, they've been a really, they've been doing a really good job aiding the underclassmen and, you know, contributing to this culture that we have that is so fantastic. Classes are seeing a big shakeup this year. There's lots of different policies being implemented through them. Teachers are required to have a retake policy. Overwhelmingly, students are enjoying this retake policy and taking teachers up on this opportunity. Teachers enjoy having this retake policy, but they have said that a small minority of their students are not using their time correctly and taking advantage of this policy. Some English teachers have explained, or expressed some difficulty with the retake policy in terms of writing. They don't think it's really the best to have kids continually revising essays and whatnot. They'd rather that they take what they learned and focus it forward, but the overwhelming majority of people are enjoying these and really taking good use of them. Also, student, or teachers have been, a lot of teachers have been implementing what is called an equitable grading scale. I think it's at a school board level, like the poll grading policy. So essentially, students try, are supposed to hit learning targets, and homework doesn't really count for points. It's to supplement your education, and tests are like out of a certain number, so kids don't have such a dramatic drop from fifty to zero, which is failing a class. They have more of an opportunity, and they can keep reaching it, and that comes into the retake, like attaining it. Teachers have been doing their best to explain it, but kids have said there's not as much transparency as they'd like. It's kind of thrown on them this year, and it'll take a little more time for them to get used to it. School programs have been taken, have taken off this in the early part of the year. One in particular, in early September, we had our Self-Care Week, followed by, is what they had, the Yellow Ribbon Week. Dr. Nelson, our Prevention and Wellness Coordinator, put that on for us. During Self-Care Week, students were encouraged to think about themselves and their current state of their mental and physical health. After coming back from not being at school for such a long time, students were really grateful for having this reminder to be more cognizant of their mental health and physical health. I know just talking with students, they love being back, but it's a big, it's a big difference from being at home all year, and, you know, you had the little part at the end of the year, but there's a lot more on their plate. There's a lot more stressors, sports are back, and there's just a lot more they need to handle. So it was very great that Dr. Nelson was able to put that on. That was followed by our Yellow Ribbon Week, which they talked a little bit about. It's about suicide prevention and, like, overall mental wellness. Throughout the week, the Friday before, students and faculty were encouraged to come tie-dye yellow shirts to be worn during the week to support solidarity with the program. Students decorated the halls and were given stickers and pins with nice little sayings on them to kind of encourage kids to always be aware and have a great day. Throughout the week, during their lunch periods, they had activities and discussions about being open with your mental health and making sure that they know all the resources, both student and faculty-run, that you can go to at the high school. I heard from students that they appreciated knowing that there was a place for them to go if they ever had any trouble because lots are having trouble with all the stress that comes with being back at school. And I was a part of one discussion, and learning more about your classmates is a really great thing, and it helps you put yourself more in their shoes and to be able to understand everything about them. And it's really important that we have more open discussions like this in a place where kids can come. Teachers have made a point about, or made a point of emphasis about checking in with their classes more because they know about all the added stress that has come with this year, even with all the great things that have happened. Just a little switch-up, the juniors are taking the PSAT, I believe, October thirteenth, and the underclassmen will have a kind of an assembly where, through Dr. Nelson, our Prevention and Wellness Coordinator, seniors and other students, or mostly seniors, because juniors will be taking the test, will have an open discussion about these resources because they didn't, they knew about it through Yellow Ribbon Week, but they weren't as aware as, you know, upperclassmen because they've been through this, so they'll discuss that in our Green Dot program, which is, I think I mentioned last time, our, like, our anti-bullying and culture of the high school. So that will happen. About masks, seniors, or not seniors, but the entire school, I believe, is doing a pretty good job. The faculty is making sure that they keep hammering that point that everyone needs to be wearing their mask and wearing them correctly so they have a use. Some students, you know, there's always going to be a few that leave it down, but other students also encourage that they put their masks up and be healthy and be safe. Clubs have seen a rapid increase in participation this year from prior years. I know Leaf Club, which I am in, is, has an all-time high, and just a little bit about that. All this, we created a natural prairie in our courtyard, and many classes are taking advantage of that and going outside and learning in the nature, and I've heard from many students that it is great when the teacher has on the door, "Head out to the prairie classroom. We're going to go have class there." Dr. Calentes and Dr. Herman were actually in an AP Environmental Science class, trying to hear a little bit more about what their efforts are and how the class is kind of run. So I was actually in that class. We ran a simulation, and they weren't with my group, but I think they got to know a little bit more about how the class is running, where we're trying to head with classes like that in the future of the school. And I just want to kind of bring it back to the point of this high school during the summer. Dr. K. stressed the importance of restoration, renewal of Libertyville culture, and the entire class is doing a fantastic job with that. School spirit has an all-time high. When I was a freshman or sophomore, I don't remember a time where kids of all grades were showing up to every sporting event. It's not the football games anymore. It's the volleyball games. It's the soccer games. I saw a few at the cross-country meet, like, every, everyone's going, and it's, it's, the seniors leading by example, and freshmen are coming, and sophomores, and it's just so good for, like, our camaraderie and our spirit. I just thought I'd like to mention that I taught, I know many people from other schools, and I never hear kids, or the majority of kids, say they really enjoy going to school and they enjoy everything the school has to offer, and they appreciate going there. So I just want to wrap it up with that. So I'll pass over to Ryan for some sports updates.
Okay, so our fall sports seasons are well underway with cross-country golf, football, boys' soccer, hockey, girls' swimming and diving, girls' tennis, girls' volleyball, palms and cheer, practicing and competing. Members of these teams have said that their experiences have felt almost normal compared to last year with the exception of masking for indoor practices. They also feel overwhelming support from the school and their peers, with turnout for all sporting events being super high. Also, members have said that they feel closer bonds with their teammates with longer seasons, more contests, and generally closer contact than what we experienced last year. There's also been a lot of student enthusiasm for football games this year. On game days, the marching band drum line plays in the hallways before school. LHS plays the school song between classes, and overall, there's an excited feeling among students. Our team has had a few big wins, one notably being seventy-six to six against Waukegan, setting the school record for most points in a game. This record was previously set in nineteen twenty-three. Congratulations to our football team. Our first home game was against Lake Zurich. It was really well-attended, and students said it felt normal, and they were really excited to be back in the stands cheering on our team. Our second game against Waukegan was a little bit less attended, especially in the second half. However, many senior students stayed in support of our team. The marching band, Palms Team, and Cheer Team all performed at these games, and we're really excited to perform for such a large audience compared to last year, where it mainly was parents. We also have had a great turnout to our away games, including underclassmen, who usually don't show up to those kind of events, but a lot of them are showing up, and in addition to the upperclassmen, who usually fill the stands. Libertyville's Principals Advisory Board held their first meeting last week. This group is made up of students of all grades who provide a voice for the rest of the school and any student issues or opinions, or like current events at the school. These students then provide their input to Dr. K. to create initiatives or ideas to continuously improve LHS. We are excited to see what these students will do in the coming months. Libertyville also has a very busy week ahead of us. It's our Spirit Week to get ready for the Homecoming Dance Saturday, with this year's theme being Rock the Ville. And this is all organized by our amazing student council. Today was Tropical Day, which had a great turnout. I saw a lot of tropical shirts, sunglasses, and leis from all of our students. The upperclassmen definitely led the way in spirit with the most people dressing up, but the freshmen and sophomores are catching on to our Libertyville pride, and I think they're getting a little bit more, like, bold, like, in being able to dress up. Oh, Monday and Tuesday, we have float building to design and build floats for the Homecoming Parade Saturday. We also have an annual girls' Powderpuff Flag football game this Wednesday for senior students. Seniors form teams, complete with coaches and cheerleaders, and some teams have held practices outside of school these past few weeks. Seniors are very excited about this because it's a return to another one of our classic homecoming traditions. We've also created a new Libertyville tradition by switching our Homecoming Court around a little bit this year. Twenty senior students, who represent every aspect of Libertyville's culture, has been voted on by teachers and peers and will be honored at our Assembly Friday and Parade Saturday. Congrats for a two thousand and twenty-one Homecoming Court. Friday, we have our Homecoming Assembly to celebrate our Wildcat spirit, watch performances by our band, Cheer and Palms Teams, and find out which grade will win the Spirit Cup. For our first year back, the Spirit Cup is up for grabs, and it's going to be a very intense competition, seeing if the seniors will win it this year. Friday, we not only have our football game against Lake Forest, but also a soccer game against Carmel. These events are at four-thirty and seven-thirty, and enthusiasm and spirit have been building up all week for the Cats to win. Finally, Saturday, we have the Homecoming Parade and Dance that evening. The dance is slightly Um, the dance is slightly different than it would be in a normal year, beginning at six-thirty PM and it's being held outdoors. Uh, typically at this time of year, link crew leaders at LHS talk to their freshman groups and just talk them through the whole homecoming process, including buying tickets, getting dinner reservations, reservations and just how the dance works. Um, this is really helpful for many freshmen because the dance is such a new concept for them. In addition to that, this year, a few link crew leaders held special sessions for members of the sophomore class who also haven't gotten an opportunity to participate in a high school dance either. Um, talking to some underclassmen, most are excited but a little bit nervous for their first homecoming. Um, some are a bit sad that it isn't in the gym as always, but overall, the students are thankful that we are returning to an almost normal dance. Um, I can feel a lot of energy and excitement in the hallways this week and I'm sure it will continue to grow in anticipation of the weekend. Um, finally, over the past few weeks, LHS has been hosting representatives for many major colleges to talk to our senior and junior students. Um, around seventy-five percent of the representatives are in person and twenty-five percent are virtual, um, which actually has worked really well with few technical issues. Um, hearing from senior students and also from my experience, uh, the visits are super helpful in, you know, making decisions, asking questions to those representatives and also just learning information about college or college options. Um, and the, most of the people that have been there have been seniors, however, there are a few juniors that have chosen to attend as well. And I'm going to pass it off to Faith.
I don't know if my mic is on just because the green light is on.
Do you want me to pass you mine and use that?
Student rap.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, everybody. So I just want to start off to say a huge part of Libertyville's community and what makes it so special is the excellence of academics we have at LHS. The performing arts as well is not only shows the intelligence of LHS, but also carries over the overall creativity that we have at our school as well. I work at Townie Square Restaurant in downtown Libertyville and get to firsthand experience the positive words I hear about LHS from the community and how excited parents, aunts, uncles, cousins and everyone is to see their students so involved in our community, whether that's window painting or doing extra credit choir shows at the local church or old folks home. Seeing LHS athletes' pictures in the windows of your favorite local shops, it's all just so exciting for our community and for the parents of our students.
Student rap.
This is what LHS and the people are and what it makes it so special. At LHS, we recently had a performing arts fall band concert on September twenty-third where students got to display their amazing, amazing musical abilities, sorry, to families, friends and more. Without the LHS band, football games would not be the same. The excitement and passion they bring to their skill and our student body is so impressive and so memorable. Going to LHS Theater, the mu- school musical Matilda will be happening on October twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth and thirtieth for parents and adults to see for anyone who's interested. Not only the cast, but the crew and directors put so much work and effort into what they present to the community and practice every day after school for several hours. They put so much effort into this musical and it's seriously so important for our student body to go and participate in watching this because I have a few friends in theater and it's crazy the amount of um, passion they put into these musicals.
Student rap.
Choir as well will be having a concert coming up very soon, but the date is not decided yet. As a student that has been in choir all four years and done other groups such as acrobatic and as an exec member of the choir board, I can easily tell you choir has helped me so much find something that can boost my mood if I'm having a difficult day. Choir and band will be going to Richardson Farms for a field trip on October twelfth, which is something we haven't been able to do since two thousand nineteen, which was my sophomore year. So being able to go there again and have these memorable um, things with your friends and being able to take pictures is something that's really crazy to think about. Community Ed began September eighth and I've heard many good things from people in the community and even though some regulars at the diner involved in them. September eighth was also the start of Yellow Ribbon Week, which were both easily big successes as John mentioned. Personally, Yellow Ribbon Week hits very close and is a very important topic I believe our school needs to bring awareness to for our students. Going into academics, LHS is cruising very smoothly and I've heard very normal jargon from students about their classes. Partially, yes, complaining about homework and texts and quizzes, but you know, that's never going to stop, it's always going to be a regular thing. But also actually being in front of their teachers instead of over a screen has been so, so great for all of our students. Me as well, um, I struggled with Zoom and, you know, having to learn math, oh my gosh, of all things um, over a screen and being able to like in-person come and see my teachers and get that help and really experience that learning uh, face-to-face has been so, so important to me. Um, the PSAT, as John Melchien, or John mentioned, is being held on October thirteenth and LHS is wishing all students taking it good luck and to make sure to get a good breakfast before and plenty of sleep beforehand. The National ACT was held on September eleventh and from some friends I know that took it also went fairly smoothly. As much as LHS takes extracurriculars and the student voice seriously, they also want every student to have academic success in their education. Thank you for listening and make sure to go to the Hoco football game to see our athletes, performing arts and powder puff. Well, I will be participating on the field.
Thank you.
Well done.
Well done, yeah, I always, it, it's so exciting to hear all the things that are going on at our schools. It's uh, it's, it's really nice that you can uh, come share that with us and uh, um, each, each month, so we appreciate it. So moving on, we have the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you, and I have a little bit of additional good news. The students covered most of it, so thank you very, very much. Um, I will start off by adding the LHS students who are recognized as the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two national merit semifinalist. That is Luke Anderson, Owen Haywood, George Huber, Ryan McGregor, Emma Moscato, Molly Moscato, Ylim Na, Mikil Patel and Andrew Sorenson. And thank you, you already read the Vernon Hills, so thank you to all of the students for performing so well. We wish them luck in the next level of competition for the national merit. Also, at Libertyville High School, they are proud to announce that the first class of inductees will be into the Athletic Hall of Fame. They'll be introduced and celebrated during homecoming activities the week of October first. The LHS Athletic Hall of Fame was recognized, was organized to recognize and honor those Wildcat athletes, teams and coaches who excel in their respective sports or coaching roles and who help bring honor, recognition, distinction and excellence to LHS. And uh, because this is their inaugural um, year, we'll go ahead and uh, read the people who will be recognized. Uh, Jim McMillan, class of nineteen twenty. Dan Holm, class of nineteen seventy-one. Brett Butler of seventy-five. Pam Miller from seventy-six. Allison Marquett of ninety-one. Becky Coleman, ninety-three. Kelly Carl, ninety-four. Eric Van Gotham, ninety-seven. Kevin Walter, ninety-nine. And then on to the coaches, Coach Max Sanders, class of fifty-nine. Coach Jim Panther. Coach Chris Terzna. Thank you. Um, Coach Randy Kucheski, Coach Andy Bida and the nineteen ninety-one girls Socrates. Um, also a really important announcement, the D-one-twenty-eight Foundation for Learning will have its annual fundraiser, the big event on Saturday, November sixth. Uh, it will take place from seven to nine PM and it will be virtual. Um, it will include a live trivia competition, silent auction, a raffle and paddle race for students in need. Registration will start on October first with all the details being available on the website. All proceeds benefit programs for LHS and VHHHS students. And then finally, the Illinois Association of School Board Leaders recognize um, school board members for the individual time and talent they've devoted to learning and leadership activities provided by the association. At the Fall Division Meeting, two D-one-twenty-eight board members received recognition. Jim Batson received a certificate for maintaining his master board member status and Don Carmichael received a lapel pin for earning master board member level one status. Please join me in recognizing our board members.
Dr. Denise Herman, Superintendent.
Uh, and that's all of my good news for tonight. Um, next up, I wanted to share briefly um, with the board and the community that we continue to move forward with our strategic planning process. Um, I want to compliment people on the data team for pulling together. Um, gosh, it seems like hundreds and hundreds of sets of data, we reviewed some of it this afternoon to answer the question, where are we now? Our next session will take place on um, November second and that will be an all-day session and it will be in-person. Um, so again, we're continuing to move through that process. Um, at our meeting in August, we talked about having a special board session rather than having it be on the evening. Um, however, I think I realized that there's a conflict for two board members, so I will be working with Lisa and Jim and others to make sure it's essential to me that all seven board members can be there to participate, so look for another opportunity there. Um, and then I'm going to turn it over to Bryant for a COVID nineteen update.
Thank you. Let me see if I can share my screen here.
Brian Kelly, Associate Superintendent.
Try to make the print as big as possible so you guys can see, but I, I will just go through the slides here. Um, so just uh, just kind of an update because it has been a while since we've had a board meeting since August, so I just wanted to give an update. Um, we have shared the District one-twenty-eight Culture of Care Response Plan. Um, the response plan has been updated a couple of times since we've met and that's to align with the ISB and IDPH guidance. Um, along with that response plan, we have also been communicating with our staff, parents guarding, guardians on some of the school health guidelines. So I think we've, in the past, last week, we sent another update. Um, we sent one a couple of weeks ago just on some of the guidance that we've received. Um, you know, from ISB, Illinois State Board of Education and then Illinois Department of Public Health. We've also then, you know, posted that information on the district website um, under D-one-twenty-eight Next. Um, and the D-one-twenty-eight Next has links to our Culture of Care Response Plan. It also has links to our COVID nineteen reporting, um, that I'll get into in a little bit. Um, also on our LHS and Vernon Hills websites, the main websites, the um, information that has been sent to parents regarding um, the symptoms um, and how to talk to the school nurses about the symptoms and the follow-up and testing that's required to return to school is all right there on both websites um, as a quick link so that everybody can see it. So we're trying to share the information as many places as possible. Um, try not to inundate our families with too many emails, but also try to get that information out there as um, you know, things are updated from the state. Um, just to review a little bit, you know, some of our prevention strategies, number one um, is to promote vaccination. I'll get into our update on our vaccination rates. Um, as the students talked about, consistent and correct mask use um, is one of our important prevention strategies. Physical distancing as much as possible, it's a lot more difficult um, in a larger school when you get everyone back into the buildings. But again, this is just one of the strategies and you want to use as many of these together um, as possible. The other one is screening and testing and I'll give you an update on our screening and testing a little bit. Ventilation, which you know, Mark and his team has been working on for a couple of years, um, which has been great. Again, we want to reiterate um, hand washing respiratory etiquette and keep, you know, talking about that. We can't forget about that as one of the basics. But we can't, you know, let that go by the wayside. Um, again, staying home and sick and that's why we're communicating those. Um, and we want our families to be in contact with our school nurses and ask questions. Our school nurses are more than happy to take time and talk to families, um, talk to students, talk to staff. Um, and you know, bear with us, our schools have been doing, I think, a great job not only with our um, learning support team, um, secretaries talking to families, but also our nurses. So you know, we're there to help as much as possible. Um, you know, contact tracing with isolation and quarantine. Again, our nurses work with the Lake County Health Department based off of guidance from Illinois Department of Public Health. And that's again, to keep students, staff, you know, out of the building when they need to be quarantined so that we can, you know, keep everyone else in the building healthy and then again, cleaning and disinfecting every day, but also in other areas. Um, you know, when we need to. So those are our prevention strategies, just a quick overview of and reminder of them again. Um, you know, one of the things too, as we get into flu season and promoting vaccination, the other thing is to talk about flu vaccines. And every year, we um, provide free flu, free flu vaccines for our staff through our um, co-op, our insurance co-op, so hopefully our staff, um, you know, they get information on that. But again, for families to take advantage of flu vaccines in the area and you'll see them popping up now at Walgreens and other places, so. Talking about the data that we monitor and this is what we've talked about. Um, before, we look at the community transmission, vaccination coverage, testing and any outbreaks. And so, oops, let me go back here. I was trying to get to our website if I can. There it goes. So on our website, this is the data that we've been monitoring, monit- monitoring and we update it every couple of weeks. So last time we updated was um, September seventeenth and I'll update it again at the end of this week. We look at Lake County, the positivity rate and then the number of cases per hundred thousand. And you can see from August tenth to September seventeenth, you know, where that's kind of come down a little bit. Um, in Lake County, Libertyville um, has, you know, gone up a little bit and then come back down. Vernon Hills has um, risen a little bit over time and I'll see what it is at the end of uh, this week. Our vaccination coverage, uh, to give you, uh, you know, Lake County is at fifty-seven percent, so it's growing. But just to compare that with our D-one-twenty-eight staff, they're at ninety-one point five percent. Um, our tw- our D-one-twenty-eight students, Vernon Hills is at seventy-five percent, Libertyville is at eighty percent. And again, I'll get an update at the end of this week. So again, we talked about one of those things, the high vaccination rate has helped us in a lot of areas, you know, keeping people healthy, but also limiting the number of quarantines. Um, I'll, I'll get in a little bit uh, on another slide about some of the testing that, you know, we're doing and the updates on that. And then again, if you've been watching in the news at all about other schools having uh, clusters or outbreaks, currently we don't have any and an outbreak is defined as two cases connected at a school um, within the school environment. So um, the county works with our nurses on cases, um, positive cases and how they were connected. So if they were two positive cases, but they occurred outside of a school, um, they're not considered a school outbreak, so it's got to be a connection within, you know, a school environment. So that was again, part of some of the uh, last updates. Let's go back to.
Brian Kelly, Associate Superintendent.
Testing update. Um, so again, we talked about, you know, um, weekly testing was required for unvaccinated um, students in extracurricular activities. So back in August, we started with unvaccinated indoor fall sport athletes and we were using the Binex Now test. Um, and then starting last week, because we switched over to shield testing, um, we included all unvaccinated fall sport athletes, so that included indoor and outdoor. And then we added in some of our extracurricular activities, depending on the type of activity, you know, the contact, some of the traveling via bus to some other activities. And we'll continue to add those as we go as activities change and activities expand. So some of the fine arts was added in there, um, again, for unvaccinated. Those going to um, homecoming, um, dances, powder puff, the unvaccinated um, students were added into our testing. So again, um, our unvaccinated staff members, they've uh, been using Binex Now when we started three weeks ago. And then this last week, we moved over to shield testing. So Shield got set up last week and we work with Passport Health. Um, and it's been, um, you know, knocking wood, everything's been going well at both schools. We test two, two times a week. We give people uh, two windows of opportunity at both schools to test. So we go Monday and Thursday, um, to, there's an opportunity Monday, um, I'm trying to remember the times, Monday morning, no, I'm sorry, Monday afternoon at Libertyville and Thursday morning at uh, Libertyville. And then Vernon Hills is during the middle of the day on Monday during lunch periods and the middle of the day on Thursday at lunch periods. And so um, our students, um, again, we expanded and we'll add more people in next week. So that's a little bit of the testing update.
Brian Kelly, Associate Superintendent.
Any questions?
Brian Kelly, Associate Superintendent.
Great, thank you, Brian, and we'll move next to Mark Koopman with our update for facilities.
Thank you, Dr. Herman. Um, the board uh, went on a tour at our last committee meeting, so we've had some progress since you're, we're last there. We have, uh, they started doing the gym equipment, has uh, been starting to be. Um, we have, uh, they started doing the gym equipment is, uh, been starting to be installed. Um, they have duck socks up, uh, for the HVAC system. So they're doing transitions, um. And doing the connections for that. Uh, the construction trailer has gone outside and today they, uh, were working on grading. Uh, spreading some, uh, black dirt, getting ready to seed. Um, repairing some of the roadway that was, uh, damaged during construction, uh, part of it. Uh, pouring the outside stairs, uh, emergency exits and, and getting, finishing up outside work or sidewalks and that. Uh, roofing is, uh, has been underway. So now the dry rezet areas are totally covered. Waterproof in the flashing was finished today. So, um, we're working, working our way across the roof. Uh, approximately eight more days of roofing, you know, depends on weather. Um, ultimate goal, um, we have the, uh, flooring scheduled, you know, painters are already painting more. There's, you know, the walls, uh, had inside of, uh, first coat of orange around the bottom, which he didn't see. Uh, so it's starting, uh, starting to shape up. It looks great.
Any questions? All right, we had three freedom of information requests this month. Um, one was received, um, it was a commercial request on the 17th of August and it was for the bid processes. Um, the second one was another commercial request and it was for our copy of our copy lease agreements. The third was for infer, uh, staff information. It was requested on September 20th. And it is for the list of all CU, CHSD 128's employees, first names, last names, email addresses. Um, all were, um, satisfied within three days of receipt.
In the past, we've always had an indication of how long it took a staff member to put that information together, but that's no longer a part of these reports. Not that it matters, but I kind of like to know, like, does it take somebody a half hour or are we spending three days on these?
Don Carmichael, Secretary.
Can we just put that back into future ones? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think Carol had marked that down. She always asks myself or Dan Stanley about the amount of time and we can add that back in.
Thank you.
So.
Jim Batson, Vice President.
Okay, moving on. Uh, thank you, Dr. Herman. Um, we have the consent vote agenda. All these items were reviewed, uh, earlier in the month in, uh, in committee. And, uh, so we have a consent vote agenda here for, um, consideration. Uh, we have a, uh, roll, uh, not a roll call, but a, a motion to.
Move to approve the consent vote agenda.
Okay, uh, any questions or comments from the board? No, hearing done. Roll call please, Carol.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Uh, we'll move on and I'll hand it over to myself for the program and personnel committee. Um, uh, we have a couple of items here. The first one is employment of employees. These are, uh, additional, um, uh, employment changes, uh, uh, since our committee meeting earlier in the month. So if we can have a, um, motion, please.
Casey Rooney, Facilities and Finance Chair.
I move to accept the employee designations, hires, et cetera, as presented. Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Okay, hearing done. We have a roll call, please, Carol.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. And we have one more item here memorandum of agreement. Uh, for the, uh, school year 21, 22 sick days. Any?
Sure, um, I'll give you a little bit of background. So we, um, you know, last year, um. We had an agreement regarding, uh, COVID sick days, um, for teachers that, um. Were sick themselves, had a quarantine or had, um, childcare issues during, you know, during, due to quarantining. Or COVID with their children. And so, um, but that was only a one-year agreement. Um, the difference too with, um, last year is that we were remote and hybrid. And so now we're looking at full in-person, uh, this year and trying to, you know, look at all the different scenarios. To try to, um, obviously the one thing we want to look at is. Our adults, um, have the opportunity to be vaccinated. And being vaccinated allows you also not to have to, uh, quarantine in certain circumstances. So if you read through this, one of the things is there are different scenarios for staff members that are vaccinated or not vaccinated. Um, and by our high vaccination rate of 90% for our staff. Um, it really, um, I think allows, you know, our vaccinated staff to be able to stay and work and not have to quarantine. Um, but if there are some circumstances, as we are aware, there are now vaccinated, um, individuals that are, um. You know, getting COVID, um, that, you know, we want to be able to, um. You know, take care of them as much as possible, but also look at opportunities when somebody might be at home, can they still work? Um, and can they still teach remotely? Because we do have some of the, um, electronic, um. Capabilities that we didn't have maybe two, three years ago. It's for them to be able to, um, you know, teach at home. And still have access to our students and also for our other staff. So we, um, you know, worked, I think closely with our union, teachers' union on trying to come up with. Um, all the different scenarios, um, for this and, um. I don't know, is there any questions on any of it?
Have we had an instance yet where a teacher was quarantined and was teaching remotely?
We, yes, we're going to be, yes. So we've had a couple of instances that we've been able to do that and see how it worked. And then, and now obviously we're going to be putting this in place right away.
That, that's the thing I'm wondering is, yeah, how, how did it go?
As far as I know, I, I, it was great for the kids to be able to have their teacher there still teaching them.
And then you just have a, a sub sit in the classroom and then the teacher pipes in.
Yeah, I'll, I'll confirm that from a school standpoint, the, the few circumstances we've had where the teacher has really chosen to teach from home. Um, the, the instruction has been able to continue. Short of that, the construction stops hiccup. Uh, and, and you know, there are some sub plans and those kinds of things, but that's really not the authentic instruction. So when that teacher is live even via Zoom, that makes all the difference. They can continue the instruction and the curriculum moves forward. Uh, and yes, there's an adult in the building, but that's been great. And I'm, I'm really excited for this to, uh, be more formalized. Right. And, and the thing is, we're, no matter what, even if they were at home, we'd have to pay for a sub. So it's not costing us anything extra in the end. So, you know, you'd have a sub. So now we have a sub that's, you know, monitoring them in person, but we have the teacher that still has access to our students. It's terrific. So.
Brian Kelly, Associate Superintendent.
And, and, and the other thing, just real quickly, so this would be an MOA with our teachers' union. But we also want to look at, um, you know, for our educational support personnel or, you know, administrators that are in this situation. Because they're not part of the union to be able to, you know, afford the same, you know, opportunities for them. So.
And that's what we've traditionally done.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments related to that? So just to clarify, this motion is for the memorandum. As well as the expectation that it, that those concepts will be applied to the ESPN administrators as well.
Yep.
Just to be clear.
So we would call this an adoption of a memorandum or?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Okay, so in that case, can we have a motion, please?
I move to adopt, uh, the memorandum of agreement regarding 2021 to 22 sick days.
A second.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Okay, hearing done. Roll call, please, Carolyn.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, I will hand this over to Chairperson Rooney for the Finance and Facilities, Facilities Finance Committee.
Okay. I'm sure you've noticed that we have a few less items on the agenda than usual. Our, uh, Associate Superintendent for Finance, Dan Stanley is not here this evening as he is enjoying some time off. With his new beautiful baby girl. So we wish him congratulations on that. Uh, the first item on the agenda is the employee compensation report. This, we have no action required on this. This is just something that the law requires. Um, that it's presented to the board and then it gets posted on our website by October 1st. So we saw this in committee meetings. Does anybody have any questions or comments about it? Okay, then it will move on to being, um, published on our, thank you, published on our website. Uh, second item, uh, change orders. Mark, you want to chat with us?
Maintenance project grant.
Oh, the maintenance project grant. I'm sorry.
Project grant, yeah.
Uh, second item is actually the school maintenance project grant. Um, and this is something we're just being asked to approve the application process, correct, Mark?
Correct, yes, um.
Mark Koopman, BNG.
So Dan, you know, Dan spelled out, uh, you know, what the, the grants are for. Uh, maintenance and buildings and upkeep and, and things like that. Uh, we have, uh, upcoming projects. And we're starting with our roofs here at Vernon Hills because it's, uh, it's due. So we selected, um, the roofs that need attention right away. Uh, that are in the worst condition and we've come up with a game plan to work around the, been working with our consultants to budget and work our, our way around the building. Um, so we felt that, uh, when Dan and I discussed it, um. The rough areas in, in the front of the building here in the center over the foyer and that was a perfect, uh, place to start. Uh, the project and we used the grant money for that. So, um, I think Dan wants to just approval for, put the application process in. And to use those roofs as part of the application process.
Right.
Um, we've used roofs in the past. I think we also use tuck pointing. So it's like roofing, tuck pointing, window replacement, things along that line and, um, that the grant, uh. Um, when you apply for those things, they, you know, they look, they consider those things first. So.
I remember we did the tuck pointing one before, but it's, it's a, it doesn't necessarily bind us to the project. Um, we will be asked to vote, vote on the actual bids for this work at some point. This is just giving permission for the application process to proceed.
And to use those projects in the application process. And we have two years to complete the work.
So do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 school maintenance project grant application?
Moved.
Second.
I'll second it then.
Alrighty.
How does Carol know?
Carol, roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Moving on to the change orders, um, change order or orders? It looks like there are a couple of different things in here, Mark.
Well, it's, it, what, what, um, Gilbane did, this is all with, uh, the company that was doing our sewer and water work. So we had a bunch of change orders. So they combined them all into, into one large change order instead of doing eight change orders. Um, at the end of the process, so, um.
Mark Koopman, BNG.
The reason for these, these change orders, uh, the first four were county improvements. We submitted our drawings to the county for sewer and water and they wanted us to make some changes and do some upgrades. Um, so there was additional money in that. Um, and number five, we had additional utility location costs. Um, the company was paid to, I believe it was go 15 feet deep, if I remember correctly, looking for the pipes for the, the pool. And they were actually deeper than that. So we had the additional cost of going deeper. So we, when we put our pylons in, we didn't rupture. You know, the main drain for the pool, um, and flood the area out. So, um, that was the cost there. And then, um, item six through eight, uh, were changes the village, village made. Um, and they're all due to, you know, sewer and water, sewer and water work on the campus.
So the total dollar amount does require board approval then?
Yes, um, yeah, the total dollar amount is $46,927. There is one, one change order in there that is zero dollar value, so.
That's a good thing. We like zero dollar change orders.
So this is coming out of contingency. It's not an additional amount.
Yes, this is coming out of contingency. It's always been in the contingency budget.
Okay.
Okay. All right, um, so can I get a motion to approve the change order in the amount of $46,927? To come out of the contingency plan?
Absolutely.
Second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Carol, roll call, please.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. That concludes facilities and finance. This may actually be a record.
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing.
We haven't heard from.
It's okay, we have tax.
Carol, don't disappoint us here. So, thank you, uh.
I just mean facilities and finance. I'm, I can only speak to that.
Uh, moving on, item number six is the Illinois Association of School Boards. And I just wanted to draw your attention to everyone received in their board packet, uh, this last Friday. The, uh, 2021 Resolutions Committee Report. Um, uh, I will be representing the district in November at the joint conference. Um, and voting on these items. Many of them are sort of a consent agenda kind of thing. But, uh, there's a few new ones in here and some that might wind up getting pulled out. So my suggestion is take a look at them. If there's anything that really, you know, is, is of interest to you. We can discuss these either in the October or the November meeting. We'll find whichever one, uh, the committee meetings, I'm sorry. Uh, we can, uh, discuss these in our committee meetings in either October and November, whichever one has the, the shorter of the, uh, agendas. So just to draw your attention to that, so.
These do get some attention too. The public gets them and sends us, uh, notifications. Or asks us if we would vote one way or another.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and there's an interesting change in position this year in one of them.
Yeah, in one of them, yeah, the, the, the committee, the delegate, uh, uh, committee, uh, changed the position on one of them. So. Um, and then the only other, uh, uh, update is there's a, uh, our Lakes Division meeting, uh, taking place a week from Wednesday. So, uh, if anyone's interested in that, I will be attending on our behalf. And if anyone else wants to join us, that's great.
I have one question, uh, the.
So now, Colcarney, board member.
Document the KNA report with the draft resolutions. Is that also posted to our school district website typically?
This document?
Yeah.
No, no, not, not typically, no. It is on the IASB, uh, site, but it's, uh, we typically don't do that. Yeah.
Are you considering asking for that? What?
I mean, I was just wondering because Don, you just mentioned that there are some interesting things that we should look at. As a parent, I was never aware of this. So I'm just.
Right.
Wondering if, if there might be other, uh, community members who are interested. Um, or if not right now, you know, once you've discussed it, maybe we can provide some notes. You know, don't have to look at 500 pages. Maybe here are some sections of interest.
Yeah, it, yeah, they're, they're, um, just as a, a reminder, these are sort of position. Um, uh, items, it's, uh, belief statements and, and sort of positional, uh, items that. The Illinois Association of School Board uses to inform their work in Springfield. To discuss with our legislators down there. So it's, it's nothing we typically vote on. Or it's nothing that typically, um, you know, impacts us directly. These are more, um, uh, opinions on whether these things are important to us. Uh, and that's sort of in our committee meeting, we'll sort of get a, a, a read for, uh, if anyone has strong opinions. One way or the other on any of these so that I can appropriately vote. In the, the meeting that I attend in November, actually every delegate, every district has one vote. And, uh, as a delegate, I would vote yea or nay on any of the items that are called out individually and or on sort of the consent. Uh, group. And that just gives them a, a feel for what they're, the delegates, um, you know, opinion on these. So, uh, it's, they're, they're not anything that govern us or they're not anything that we have to, uh, abide by or, or respond to. It's just, these are, are, um, position papers basically for, for them to, to work on.
Dr. Denise Herman, Superintendent.
Maybe after our conversation, we could talk about if we do think, because I mean, we have the school.
Maybe after our conversation, we could talk about if we do think, because I mean, we have the school board page on the website. So I think sometimes posting information about board activities or board legislation would be helpful for parents potentially.
Okay. Um, CEDOL.
I just have a brief update. Um, so I attended, uh, the governing board meeting on the 25th of August. And at that meeting, we approved the budget for the, uh, fiscal year of 22. And then, so we went, we went through all the documents that support that budget and it was decided that. It was up for approval. Uh, and then we also approved, uh, a one-year extended bargaining agreement with the STU. Which stands for CEDOL Teachers Union. So it's the specific teachers that all work for the, uh, CEDOL Co-op.
Kara Benjamin, CEDOL.
Thank you very much.
The short and the long of it.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. Yeah.
Oh, it's my pleasure. It's, it's a really lovely group of people who, um. Just their executive board, they're, they're remarkable educators. Um, but then, you know, so many of their educators attend these meetings. And they just have a lovely, um, positive energy about them. And the, the students that they serve, our students who are served are. So lucky to be part of this cooperative.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Um, anything on a future agenda items? Anyone wants to add or suggest?
Dr. Denise Herman, Superintendent.
I know that, um, we will be bringing the tax levy information in October, um, at both the committee meeting and then for approval. And that's one of our typical October, uh, and November. Anything else?
And then we'll look at the October and November P and P for the IASB resolution. So. I know we did that in November of last year. I was just looking at the history, but we'll look at both agendas and figure out.
And we should probably talk in November at committee also about what sessions anybody's going to that's going to the tri-conference. So that we can. Divide and conquer.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Good idea. Okay.
Also hope to bring the calendar in October and any new, uh, course proposals or changes to our curriculum in November.
Exciting times.
Yes.
It all seems so normal.
Yeah.
It does.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Okay, uh, have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, roll call please, Carol.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey. Colcarney.
Aye.
Etterated.
And we're finished. Thank you, everybody.